All right. It says, what the hell did I miss yesterday? After I left, Eric messaged me not to snack on shit. LOL. Well, I was thinking about you, Ms. Amanda. You know, we were talking about, you know, that fat drug. And then there was a discussion about a weight. And you seem to have the blues with the comment about how, you know, just something from the past. And I was like, no, no, let's not worry about the past. Let's worry about the future. Let's worry about, I'm sorry, let's not worry about the past, not worry about the future. Let's worry about today. You know? That's, uh, that's, that's what I was following. So then I later in the day, I texted you a, I texted you words of encouragement. Sure, I love to bash your brains in with insults when you're dumb on this show. So that's basically it. That's what was up there. That is what was up there. Like last night, I fucking fell on my ass. I had done well and I was well past my window of where I should be eating, you know, like after 8:00 PM. I like to kind of like calm it down and not be eating. I said, fuck this shit. I'm gonna go eat some cereal. I'll try not to fuck it up today. It's okay, you know? Welcome to the Eric Zane Show Podcast, a daily show where I discuss news, nonsense, and my personal adventures. And words of encouragement. Uh, right here in the Baldwin Ace Hardware Fear Bunker Studio, Baldwin Ace Hardware, a beacon of DIY awesomeness in the Northland. We'll be bringing my dad in for Dear Meathead. In 55 minutes. Got a few questions. Some of them concern me. It's nothing that anybody's doing wrong. But I've got this, uh, mindset of, when he can provide an opinion based answer to your questions. Specific questions. He struggles with, like my pal Dave here writes, Dear Meathead. Uh, what's your favorite movie? Well, now he didn't see a lot of movies. For starters, and you know, the mind's a little tricky with my dad. So I, that one might be weird. And I'm always concerned about saying something that makes him, uh, really ponder and not really have an answer. He gets embarrassed by that. Yeah. And then Judd, the doc, Jim says, Jim Berry says, I wondered who your favorite Disney character is? And who would Eric be? Oh, man. So that's, that's a tough one, too. Brian writes, Dear Meathead, I'm going to Colorado this week for some baseball games at Coors Field. Am I obligated to drink only Coors beer until the mountains are no longer blue? It's strange. I don't know what the hell you're trying to do there. Ray writes, Dear Meathead, if your wife says to you, yell at me again, in an aggressive tone of voice, would you, would you say it again? Would you yell at her again? Uh, it's a call back to something that happened between the Queen of the Forest and myself. Joel writes, Dear Meathead, if you drop a bar of soap on the floor, is the soap dirty or the floor clean? Okay. There's also one that was sent in via email. But if you have questions, those were all on Facebook comments. If you have a question for Dad, eric@erikzainshow.com. What I'm looking for, and sometimes it's good for me to kind of like remind you. Like I've got a story about a critter that's roaming around my yard. Uh, Meathead, what's a good way to get rid of the critter? Or something like that. Uh, maybe advice on, um, something you're working on in the house. Maybe a, a chore, maybe lawn cutting, maybe, uh, repairing the shingles. I don't know. Cutting wood. Uh, doing the dishes, tasks that he can kind of like wrap his brain around and give you the best way to approach something. But the specifics kind of are troubling for him. Like, if you, if you brought up a certain thing, he, he might not even know what the fuck it is at this point. And that's just a reality. That is the, uh, that's, it's sad. There's no question. It's the dementia. So, but we do our best. We do our best. I, I try to, um, I try to do my best in wording these so that he doesn't feel awkward or, or strange or anything like that. But he loves doing the show. He loves talking to us. So I try to have fun with it with him as much as I can. So if you have anything there, please send it along, eric@erikzainshow.com. Now yesterday, oh my God. Let me just get into this because, oh, come on now, give me a break. Sorry. I almost said my password out loud. Yesterday in the backyard. I was, uh, trimming bushes. And then I looked on the ground and I saw the most calm snake. Look at this dude. Uh, this is a typical Michigan garter snake. And you're like, wow, it actually looks pretty big. He is. He's an older snake. I've seen him for years. I have videos from years ago with this guy in it and he was much smaller. I didn't realize garter snakes live upwards of 10 years. And, uh, this is, this is Mr. Snake. We haven't seen him a long time. Now O'Neal has been headed over to this spot in the yard and like, what the fuck is, I know he's over here somewhere. I'm like, I'm like, what is he looking at? What is he, what is he doing? And I thought he was like chasing a chipmunk or something, but no, he's got this fucking snake. And I look at him and he's all curled up and he doesn't move. And then I, uh, he then, uh, I kind of made a false move and he, he took off. But then he was in a different spot and I didn't fuck with him. Uh, but he's like four feet long. In fact, I've got a video that can kind of put into perspective, give you an idea of how long this dude is. And he's really cool, really, really cool. Look at. He's a pretty big boy.
Hi Sneaky Snake.
I'm doing baby talk to the snake. Yeah, I guess, like I said, I estimated him to be about three and a half feet long. When he's all like straightened out. But at one point I stuck my finger out and he was sticking his tongue out and he approached. And then he went down a snake hole and I was able to touch him the whole time as his body went down. Look at him. Look at my man. Now those.
Hello.
He is so cool. Look at him. Watch, look at the, the tongue.
Dear tongue.
He's super inquisitive. This dude is cool.
Okay, bye. Have a nice night.
Hello, baby. Hello, hello, Sneaky Snake. Oh, Mr. Snake. Now my hillbilly wife wants to pick him up. And I'm like, don't do that. Don't, um, he'll feel threatened. And contrary to popular belief, he does, he does have teeth. Garter snakes have two teeth. They kill, uh, lots of bugs, lots of worms, toads, and small mice. So Queen of the Forest is like, where's the snake? Where's the snake? I go, well, it's getting cooler. He went in. And in fact, like I said, he went in that snake hole and I, I just touched him and his, it's so soft and rigid. It's just fantastic. Tyler says, I'd be nervous about a dog getting a hold of him. Well, they will be put on, there, there's very little that they would be able to do. Uh, O'Neal would just kind of run up to it. The other ones aren't capable. Benny's scared shitless. Uh, Linda says, my boss lives in California, took a picture of a big rattlesnake sunning himself on the rocks near his pool. I would have died. Oh, you just leave him alone. They're fine. Uh, I remember my pals in the band Waylon one time. They're, uh, they had a home in Waylon. And it was infested with snakes, infested. It was ugly. That could happen. You don't want that. Fuck, man. That sounds like something that would take a lot of hard work to, um, an expense to get rid of them. Uh, but I thought this guy was cool. And, um, his, the, the whole not being freaked out by me. I was like, wow. And, and, uh, they, they, that is, that has to be the same snake. I mean, cause I remember we had one in the same spot. It was much smaller though. But it just threw me off because I'm, I'm trimming the bushes and I'm trimming around this guy and he's not even moving. He's just kind of looking at me like, hey, what's up? Hang on, I gotta drink this coffee. Okay. Uh, Corey says, I had a flooding incident in my home Sunday. I've been doing, and I've been doing, I've been doing with that all the week. If three floors of house walls and ceilings. All right. I probably shouldn't have read that comment. I'm not sure why he even wrote it. I guess my question is, why do we care? And why are you writing it? We're over here having a conversation about snakes. I'm getting fun little quips about, hell no. Oh, man. That's great. And here you are talking about your shithole house flooding. Have you lost your mind? How can, after all of the shit that I have given Amanda and Kenny for non sequiturs, breaking down their personal fucking problems with the group when we're trying to do the Eric Zane Show Podcast? Corey checks in with dumb shit about his poverty house. And don't give me your troll bit emoji or emoji. That's not trolling. That's, you're just taking over the show to give us the Corey Show. Just shut the fuck up. Tyler says he, uh, Eric wishes he had some sort of Corey Show song that he could play similar to. Uh, Linda says, I thought the flooding story was going to include snakes floating around in the house. Beyond Process with the first chat says, we've been dumbjacked. I love dumbjacked. That's funny. Uh, Beyond Process also says snakes like on my county commission. That has to be a reference to Ottawa County and, and I'm going to get to that. I, uh, I was enjoying the YouTube County Commission meeting last night. In fact, I was on it making a bunch of smart ass comments about these dumb fucks that speak during public comment. Holy shit. I went to the doctor yesterday for this knee. I got a knee. We all have knees. Mine's been bugging me. So, uh, this is, this is where we are. First of all, I did get an X-ray. And then after he's looking at it, he assesses and he goes, all right, Eric, uh, what I, what I'm assuming here is, um, you're not, you, you are not going to need a surgery. It's, those are, those work 50/50. If you go in there and clean up whatever, whatever it is they can find, um, you know, and it just isn't that big of an issue, what I'm detecting with you. He suspects it is either, uh, some type of overuse injury or, uh, arthritis. So, and I, I stopped him and I go, so this is my body telling me it's time to, uh, maybe get a new form of exercise. Cause well, that's what my doctor, my doctor is telling me his conversation with his doctor. Cause my doctor told me that about running, uh, some time ago and I quit. So, I mean, you can keep running if you can put up with the nagging pain and the discomfort and, but you see me limping around on one knee like that. Um, on one leg like that, to me, that's, that's only going to be a recipe for disaster where, uh, other issues are going to develop because I'm not running right. Um, my, my gait would change. So, um, walking's fine. And then right away, I'm like, all right, well, time to get back in the pool. So, because walking is fine. But it doesn't really, I need elevated heart rate, heart and lungs working hard. That's, that's what kind of is, uh, in my wheelhouse. And if you're walking, you can't really get your, uh, heart and lungs working hard unless you're walking up hills all the fucking time. And I don't have that. So, um, the, I, the plan now is head over to Striders and buy a new fucking bathing suit and a set of goggles and get my fucking ass back in the pool, which is perfect. Um, non-weight bearing exercise. The, uh, actual, um, movement of the legs in the water will promote healing and strength on that knee. So that's where I'm at. So I gotta, I, yeah, I 99% sure that running is not in my future. Maybe after a significant time of no pain and no swelling. And then he says to me, um, he loves me because I, I, I'm not, you know, I'm actually smarter than he is. And he, he says, okay, uh, you have this swelling. I go, okay. So I'm guessing you want me to get the swelling down with ice? I go, what about heat? He goes, well, I don't know about heat. Heat, uh, will promote healing and blood flow. We don't want blood flow right now. We want swelling to go away. I go, okay. The heat would stimulate the blood flow. So, and he goes, oh, you, you get me, Eric, obviously. You know what's up. I go, yeah, doc. I, I mean, I knew all this. I just needed you to confirm it. And he goes, and I love how humble you are. Thank you. I appreciate that. So that's what's up. I think that, um, EZ is going the route, third person, talking about myself in third person of, uh, being in the pool and taking, uh, long strolls with my lovely wife. So not the end of the world. But, um, the knee is slowly but surely getting better. It's still fucking hurts. But the swelling is down significantly. So I'm happy about that. We have an issue with dogs. These two knuckleheads right here. Really want to have sex. Now she's, Darla's little young and I don't think she realizes what she's capable of. But she is eliciting boners in Bruce, who does not have balls. Okay? And they have, and I'm not kidding you. I thought it was a fluke. The first time I might even have mentioned this once or twice. But they have figured out 69. Every time they start to play, Bruce gets a little bit too into it. And then you turn your back on them for a second and like legit Darla's on her back. Looking up. Bruce is opposite her, standing above her. And his dick is poking out of his dog foreskin. And then he's air humping while she's licking his dick. That happens in my house. So, now you might not know this, but the dog will actually jizz. It's happened to him, even though he doesn't have balls. There will be no swimmers in it. But the, uh, vessel for moving the, the sperm out of the dog, the, um, uh, I think it's called seminal fluid is, is it's clear. It's going to blast all over Darla's face. What the fuck? And so this is just awful. And I, I said to Diana, I made her a quesadilla. And she's sitting down to eat it and they're playing. I go, okay, I want to go upstairs, but I don't want to go upstairs. You're seated at the, uh, at the island here, enjoying your food and they're playing. Can you keep an eye on them? Yeah, sure. And then she immediately starts looking at her phone while they're playing. Okay, that's not really what I want you to do. I want you to watch them. Cause I don't want, uh, dog bukkake. And, uh, sure enough, I turned around, I looked back and she's on her back and she's licking dick. I'm like, oh my God in heaven. I go, ay, ay, ay. So I, I break them up and I go, okay, it just happened. Can you actually, I hate to do this, but can you actually grab your plate? Sit here in this, uh, loves this chair and, and if you see things getting out of hand, will you please break it up? That's where we are right now. I could videotape that and probably make a lot of money. Cause there's weird people out there. Oh my God. Horrible. Uh, don't tell her, keep an eye on them. Tell her to watch them intently. That's true. Adnan says, way too early Zane nonsense. This, that's a great story. Uh, maybe let her watch them to finishing, like let, let her watch the dog jizz on Darla's face and then make her clean it up. She won't do that anymore. I, I don't know. Uh, Kenny says, no wonder why Bruce was so concerned about Darla in the pool. Oh, yeah. Tyler, uh, about me running, Tyler says, makes me think I'm really chipping away at my knees by running at a higher weight right now. I don't know, man. Running's tough on your body. But it, you know, whatever. Um, Stevie says, did the doc mention your weight being an issue? He did not. He did not. However, however, um, I was wearing just a t-shirt, just a pair of shorts and my Crocs. And I walked up to that scale and I was like, all right, here we go. Let us pray for minus, less than 180. And the nurse is like, hmm. No, I just felt 180. I just felt like I was 180. Actually, not long ago, a week and a half ago, I felt I was at 185. I got on that fucking thing and it went right to 180.6. So I'm like, hmm. Now I had a bladder full of urine at the time. And if I were to, I wanted to strip down completely nude. And if I felt if I peed and I stripped down, I might've been 179.9. Or maybe 180 on the dot. Just after I said, did you have shoes and heavy clothing? Just after I said I had Crocs, a t-shirt and shorts on, Ryan asks, did you have shoes and heavy clothing on? What is going on here with this group today? I just said that. I just explained what I was wearing and then you asked what I was wearing. Chris says, Chris asks, did you have shoes and heavy clothing on? Now I see what's going on. Amanda of all people says, yeah, you guys need to listen more instead of typing. Boy, that's crazy that Amanda's telling you guys that. Um, but actually it's not the end of the world. I feel pretty, pretty good about that. I've got to just continue to be focused as much as I can. And, uh, and drop the weight. That is, that's a, a real goal of mine. I did not close my move ring yesterday. The day got long. That's it. Said, that's gonna happen. You, you can't be perfect and you can't beat yourself up when you're not perfect. You know? All right. For those folks that are watching at facebook.com/ericzainfanpage or Twitter, at Eric Zane Show or on my YouTube channel, I'm getting ready to break down Ottawa County, which Ottawa County Commission meetings have become required viewing. It was happening last night and Allison from Harbor Humane said, you gotta check this crazy bitch out. Uh, bringing her granddaughter in there. And, and, uh, brainwashing this kid. I go, oh my God. So I, I started watching and then I started trolling. One second after I started watching, I started trolling in the comments. So much fun. Oh my God, is it great? Um, that is becoming required viewing and you can log in and watch old ones too. So the one from last night, all you gotta do is search Ottawa County Commission YouTube. It's awesome. These stupid fuckers. So anyway, for you folks on Facebook, Twitter and YouTube, I'm about to kick you out. The rest of what I do today though, there's another hour and 31 minutes of this show. Uh, I will be doing it on Twitch only. I put it out on Twitch, Facebook, YouTube and Twitter. But the whole show is on Twitch only. So I'm kind of like, hey, here you go. Now I want you to go over. So if you're on a desktop or a laptop, you just in the URL field, type twitch.tv/ericzainlive. Or if you're on your mobile device at, uh, the Google Play, is it called Google Play Store or just Google Play? I don't know. Uh, or the Apple App Store. Uh, search Twitch and then download that app. Once you do that, you search Eric Zane Live, all one word. And there I am. Hit the follow button. Enjoy the show on your mobile device. You can run it through your, the Bluetooth feature on your vehicle. Dim the screen and it's just like you and I doing morning radio. Okay? So there's that. You, uh, once you follow, you'll be notified when I go live. If you like, you can subscribe by linking your Amazon Prime account. Once you link Amazon Prime each month, you hit the subscribe button. Once you're subscribed and, uh, after you're linked through Amazon Prime or by dropping 599 on it, you will not be exposed to any of those dreaded commercial breaks that happen on Twitch. Or don't do any of that and just watch it on Twitch and, um, you will be, you'll have commercial interruption, but whatever. Either you do or you don't, I don't care. I do care, but if you don't, no big deal. Uh, and if you want the audio podcast of this show, wherever you download shows, just search Eric Zane Show and off you go. Subscribe to me on whatever platform. I just got a note from the folks at Stitcher. Which I don't even know if any of you get the show on Stitcher. I would say most are on Apple Podcasts, some on Twitter. I'm sorry, some on Twitch. Wait a minute, I'm fucking this up. Most on Apple Podcasts get the audio podcast, some on, um, Spotify. But Stitcher's going out of business. August 29. We are discontinuing operation of the Stitcher app and website. We thank you for giving us the opportunity over the last decade to offer the best possible podcast listening experience. This is the first time I've ever heard of a platform going under. Maybe the podcast bubble is finally bursting. There's just way too many podcasts out there. Most people start podcasts and then they pod fade. Uh, once they get around 20 episodes, sometimes less, and then they're never heard from again. We highly encourage you to use your platforms, Eric Zane, via your podcasts and any other way you communicate with your listeners to let them know of this change. Including a message in upcoming episodes is likely the best way to do this. Be sure to do it near the start of an episode, but a reminder at the end is never a bad idea either. I, I've always hated that advice. Um, people I know who do podcasting quite a bit say, oh my God, Eric Zane, once you start your show, why are you not? why are you not spending 15 minutes talking about where you are everywhere? And how people can check out your show? And I'm like, well, that's a, that's a horrible idea. What are you talking about? You gotta let them know. I go, well, that's bullshit and here's why. You gotta start with something interesting within the first 30 seconds asshole. Cause that's about how long you have before they go, fuck this. I can be entertained by a TikTok video. So say something interesting, funny, compelling. And then keep talking. Once you get them, then you're gonna get another spot about 90 seconds in where you gotta buy more time. You better still be interesting by that point. You better be telling somebody to fuck off. Quickly. Eventually you will get to the point where they're like, you know what? I think this is going to be consistently hitting all my, uh, uh, little triggers that make me want to listen to it. And if you, even if you don't say it, even once, they'll find it. Because they like it. Okay. You don't have to smash them in the fucking face the second you start podcasting. Just do a good job podcasting. That drives me fucking crazy. People start the show and go, all right, uh, welcome to the asshole show. Before I bring in my guest, it could be somebody amazing. Before I bring in, uh, you know, someone really interesting to talk to. Before I bring in Shaquille O'Neal or the Pope. Let me tell you where you can find my show. You can find it here and you can find it here and you can like this and you can go to here and you can tell your friends and you can share this and you can fucking do this. Fuck you. Now I do talk about it at some point every single show. But don't make that the, the first thing you start with. I, I, uh, wholeheartedly disagree with anyone who says, drop it in first. No, you dick. Come on now. Kenny says podcast addict is a decent app. Maureen says, it's almost as if you know what you're doing. Cory's pretty much useless today. All he's doing is posting stupid fucking, I don't even know what these are fucking called. Images trolling faces. What the fuck is wrong with you? You're such a fucking twerp. You may earn an asshole of the day today. Thank you to Beyond Process. Beyond Process just gifted a tier one subscription to Crazy Ashley. That's very nice of you. And then Beyond Process says content needs to be good up, up front. Needs to be good and upfront. Start with something good. All right. Cory fucking A, man. You are so gonna get banned. Let me concentrate here. So what was I doing? I'm kicking you all off of, uh, Facebook and, uh, and Twitter and YouTube. Goodbye. Thank you. Have a great day, but go to Twitch and enjoy the rest of the show. Facebook and Twitch brought to you by Irvine's Auto Repair, Grand Rapids Hybrid and EV. Twitter brought to you by Blue Frost IT. And download the show wherever you download shows, audio. That's enough. Okay. So I brought up one of my HelloFresh meal kits up north. Everybody's roughing it, you know, hot dogs, hamburgers. And I busted out the HelloFresh pork tenderloin meal kit. And I served it up. I prepared it perfectly because I read the instructions, which are so amazingly simple to follow. And I plated and served an amazing pork tenderloin dish to my father and my stepmother and my wife and myself, and everybody's looking at us like we're glamping. Holy cow. It was awesome. And I want you to try HelloFresh. The audience members that have reached out to me and said, you were right. This thing is amazing. HelloFresh, the absolute best. The meal kit shows up at your door and everything you need is inside of it. You don't have to buy even one ingredient. It's all there. All the instructions are simple. This is fun. If you have someone in your house who likes to prepare meals with you, or even if they don't, they're going to love this because it's so fun to combine forces, husband, wife, kids. Bring them all into the mix and have a great time preparing amazing meals with HelloFresh. Now you can get 16 meals free just by doing this exact thing. Go to hellofresh.com/zane16. That's hellofresh.com/zane16 and use code zane16 for 16 free meals and free shipping. Oh my gosh. Hellofresh.com/zane16 and then use code zane16 and you can get just that. 16 free meals plus free shipping. Try it out. I swear this will not let you down. You will love it so much that you will sign up again and again and again. And let me know how it goes. Send me an email, eric@ericzaneshow.com. Tell me about your amazing experience with HelloFresh. All right. Listen up guys or ladies who have guys who are struggling with ED. You are not alone, but there is help. Hims has you covered. Lots of personalized options to treat ED. Viagra, Cialis and Hardmentz Wintergreen Chewable Tablets, compounded with doctor trusted ingredients. New, discreet and only available through Hims. Hims has you covered for all of these amazing medicines that can help you. You go to forhims.com/care. There you can access licensed medical providers and trusted treatments for ED 100% online. Once you get the prescription, Hims will ship to you for free in discreet packaging and then you're done. That is awesome. No copay, no awkward in-person appointments, no video visits, no insurance required. ED is personal and now so is treating it. Go to forhims.com/care to get started today. That's forhims.com/c-a-r-e. Only available if prescribed. Subscription required. See website for full details and important safety information. Restrictions apply. Hardmentz is a chewable compounded drug. The FDA does not approve compounded drugs, nor does it verify their safety or effectiveness. Okay. Ottawa County. Okay. This, where I live, it's, um, since January, I've been talking about Ottawa County. And I've been talking about Ottawa County on this show where I live. Um, since before it was a story for the rest of the world. Since then, the Washington Post has covered Ottawa County. It's, uh, it's, it's pretty much going around the United States about how backwards and fucked up this place where I live is. And the idea was this all spawned from COVID. When, um, you know, people were wearing masks and, uh, uh, people, restaurants are being closed down and shit. And people were breaking the rules and stuff and, uh, the idea started early on in that about how it was all about, uh, control, which I've, I've never believed that. I've never believed that, um, any of the mandates that were put forth during COVID had anything to do with, um, control. I just never believed that. But stupid people, conservatives and MAGA scum, and there is a difference. A conservative, there's conservatives, there's Christian conservatives, there's MAGA scum, all different levels of insanity. Now all these people are horrible. But a group of them organized where I live and they called themselves Ottawa Impact. And they raised amongst themselves money to help people who decided to run, who would, um, thwart all of the things that happened during COVID so that they can have their freedoms and patriots and all that shit. And they won big. They dominated the most recent election. And, um, not only did Ottawa Impact candidates win the Ottawa County Commission, they, they won on a lot of school board elections. And the schools that are near and dear to me around here are now dotted with these fucking psychopaths that at every turn, at every meeting, they, they make life miserable. They're awful people. Uh, Tofus writes, nobody has dealt with anything like the pandemic. People did the best they could to try and protect people from getting COVID. That, that's how I feel too. And the freedoms and the freedoms crowd can go right over there and fuck off. Beyond Process says, Genesee, Allendale, Hudsonville. Exactly. And that's where I, I am right in the middle of that. Okay. For years I lived in Genesee. Now I live in Hudsonville. I'm right next door to Allendale. Um, these are horrible people that live here. They're dumb. They're brainwashed. They're stupid fucks. I have made no bones about it. I have firmly entrenched myself in that ideology at great cost. I've had a, a large number of audience left me. Do not care for what I have to say. They think I'm an asshole, but it's like, I'm not going to, I've never, ever, ever wanted to pussyfoot around how I feel. If I felt how they felt, I'd be talking about it here. I would say that there have been times in my life that I've had the mindset of people that live here now, but at this stage of the game right now, I do not. So that's the background. Well, the commission, uh, they don't like the, um, department, the health department leader, it's a lady by the name of, uh, Adely, uh, Hamley, I believe is her name. And you know, when during COVID, she was like, all right, you gotta wear a mask and this restaurant's gonna get shut down. And oh my God, you know, fuck, it was crazy time. Well, she has been public enemy number one since the commission took over. They want her out and they're trying to fire her. Well, there's a hold on that because she's suing. So now they're trying to find Adeline Hamley. Excuse me. Uh, now the, um, commission is trying to find a different way to fire her for a different reason. So that sets the stage for what I'm about to talk about that happened yesterday. But in addition to that, one of their commission members who they, they, you know, they, they all crossed the finish line at the same time when they won their seats is a guy by the name of Jacob Bonama, another conservative. Well, after he got elected, he was like, you know, I think you guys are fucked up. And I, I can't, because they, they're, they're doing a lot of shady shit behind closed doors and transparency has left and it, you know, he, he keeps, he's figured out, though he's a conservative, he has enough sense to realize that these are, are a power hungry maniacs. And he broke rank and said, hey, I can't, I can't, uh, I can't be a part of this anymore. He still has the seat. But now the psychopaths are like, well, you must be censured. You must be punished because you don't like what we're doing. So yesterday was that big vote. Now if that happens, I think he's like, all it means is he's not like on a financial committee or something like that. It, it does have impact, but it's just, that's where we are right now. So, uh, excuse the long windedness of this, but, um, Ottawa Board censures commissioner and passes child innocence resolution. The child innocence resolution. This comes from, um, you know, like at the pride events, they might have like, uh, drag queens there. Or there's drag time story hour where the drag queens read books to kids. And I guess there was video of some drag queen doing a performance or some shit and some kid comes up and gives a kid a dollar. Or, uh, some kid comes up and gives the performer a dollar. And they're like, oh my God, we must protect the children. Oh, it's so innocent and you're hurting them. Oh my God. So now in an effort to fire Adeline Hamley, they're saying with this resolution, resolution to protect childhood innocence. Um, if the health department has anything to do with anything, uh, like, like for example, the pride event, the health department was there. And if you, they were promoting getting vaccinated for MPOCs formerly known as monkey pox. They were also like, hey, uh, where they were promoting getting tested for sexually transmitted infections at the pride event. Basically you got a mass of people. It's a perfect opportunity for the health department to be in touch with people about their services, the things they do for the community. Uh, maybe vaccinations, similar to what I talked about, the Kent County Health Department, vaccinations for little ones, measles, mumps, rubella, uh, WIC program, shit like that. Um, AIDS testing, uh, HIV testing, I should say. Um, in fact, Kent County at the pride event was there and they were, you know, they had a area. And you know, they give you a fucking sticker and say, hey, this is what we do. Okay, great. Well, the health department in Ottawa County was at the pride event, so they have a problem with that. So they've put forth another way to try to get this chick fired, Adeline Hamley, by, uh, putting forth a resolution to protect childhood innocence. And it passed nine to two. It prevents the county from using resources on activities, on quote, activities, programs, events, content or institutions which support, normalize or encourage the sexualization of children and youth. So what I just said, they think that a pride event is normalizing or encouraging the sexualization of children and youth. They're under the impression that, um, gay equals pedophilia. That's what they think. I know that sounds crazy, but that's what they and the psychopaths that spoke at yesterday's meeting, what they think. And I'm going to show you proof of that. Audio check, video check. Now this guy is talking about climate change. I, it's the ones after this dumb fuck here that I want to focus on, but I backed it up to this retard because he sounds like a jackass and he's got a horrible speech impediment.
0.04%. Humans are responsible for about 3% of that value. That means that the globalists are destroying the world's economy and the middle class in order to decrease the gas that has essentially no effect on climate change. Also, the electricity required to charge the batteries of electric cars is generated by fossil fuels.
He just said fossil fuels. His tongue is so out of his mouth at that double S. Fossil. Fossil. You're defensible. He, he, this guy can't even manage his own fucking speaking and he wants to tell us about greenhouse gases.
Farmers cannot use electric tractors to grow crops. Electric trucks cannot transport the tons of commodities necessary.
Fossil fuel.
Functional. The climate change narrative is not about climate. It's about full control and does not benefit with the people. Commissioners, I ask that you continue to do your research and hold any agency, department or program accountable if they are following the ESG or the World Economic Forum climate change narratives. Just follow the money. Keep in mind that Al Gore has made over $330 million by promoting climate alarmism.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now this, this goes out, this, this meeting starts like in the middle of the fucking day. And then it goes on into late night because so many psychopaths have something to say. Now what you're about to see is some bitch grandma has brainwashed. It might be, I don't know, maybe it's a mom. I don't know. She looks like fuck. This fat fuck grandma brings up this kid who she's brainwashed. The kid's like eight. And listen to what she's trained this kid to say. This is gonna make you sick. Thank you to Allison.
Ellis Kelly.
For tipping me off about this. Ellis Kelly from Hudsonville is now going to speak. There she comes.
Hello, my name is Ellis Kelly. People call me moo. I'm here to thank.
I am brainwashed. This is my bitch grandma.
Mr. Moss, he, he has protected our county. And he, he has taken care of our county. He will always and still has protected our county. He is our county conditioner, commissioner and.
No, you got it right. The first time.
Groomers. Kids probably feel uncomfortable.
Groomers, kids probably feel uncomfortable. She's suggesting that the groomers out there, you know, gay people feel uncomfortable because Mr. Moss, the savior is there.
Being groomed. And I don't, I don't understand why they're doing that. If we pray and pray and pray over again, we will get what we want. We shall always pray to the Lord. He, he is our one true Lord. Other people believe in other lords. Other people have their own rights. We all know that Jesus is the best. He died on the cross for us. Thank you, Mr. Moss, for letting me come up here. Thank you for all.
I hope grandma one day walks in on this kid eating a vagina.
Of your assistance and hope. We all.
Look at grandma saying instructions. Do it right or you're not getting fed.
Have done the greatest job we all can and we're always gonna do that. And I never want that to change. Thank you, Mr. Moss. We all know you're a shepherd and we're the sheep.
Oh, no way. Get the fuck out of here. Oh my God. Mr. Moss, you are the shepherd and we are the sheep? Oh. Oh my God. This is what I'm talking about, folks. This is, this is, uh, oh. Chris in Buffalo says, yeah, you little shit. I'm allowed to believe in what I want. So are you. My opinion means nothing and so does yours. Corey says, Jesus hates people like your mom, little girl. Cat dropped the E out of U says, sounds like Joe Moss is grooming her. Chris adds, say it right or you'll go in the box tonight. Becca Shay, why are we talking about religion at the county meeting here in Grant, in Ottawa County? That's the way it is. Beyond process says she and her mom have always been crazy. Perhaps beyond process has, uh, attends these or watches these and knows this, uh, those faces make appearances from time to time. I, I don't know. I, um, these gotta be, are these monthly meetings or weekly meetings? I, I think they're monthly. What a, what a scenario. I cannot wait to watch the next one. Tyler says, if there's any grooming going on here, it's that batty old bitch grooming this brat to be a homophobe. Uh, don't blame that, that kid. She's being manipulated by awful people. No, absolutely. No, you're right. You're right. But this kind of comes with the territory because what she's done there is she's tapped the anger emotions among you all who know that this, how fucked up this is. Uh, she is, uh, young Adam Schwab says she is comparing him to Jesus. Joe Martinez adds, that's it. Brainwashed stupidity at its finest. You gotta drop, uh, fucking one of these on him.
Tu madre es una puta.
Or maybe suck my dick with your butt.
Lame mi palo con tu culo.
That's the big one. I, I'd like to start it. In fact, if we could get, uh, any one of you all to go to the meeting and say, hello, my name is so and so and lame mi palo con tu culo. And tu madre es una puta. Drop that on him. I sound like Dracula when I do it. Tofus, if there was any law and justice in the world, that woman would be in prison for child abuse, uh, abuse, abuse. David Koresh shit right there. Imagine forcing Jews and Muslims and other religions to live under your Christian ideals. You know why this is terrible? Because these pieces of shit have hijacked Christianity in such a profound way. Under the guise of, this is what the country founded on, Christian, Christian, boozing revival, fucking son of a bitch. All that, you know, and it's all led by Trump. The problem is Trump's never even fucking been in a church. It's a cult of personality. It's what we have in our hands here. And it's gonna take a little while for it to be, uh, uh, wet out so that these people can be, um, weeded out, I should say, so these people can go back to where they came from. But now they, they have a voice. They, they have the, the local leaders are in charge. So this is like their own little place. We need the National Guard to go in and invade the next meeting and just fucking take over. Start over. Beyond process is adding some good news. That kid's dad is the guy they want to replace the health director with. Is that right? Are you sure? Come on. Mediocrity Day says chilling. Joe Martinez says, I'll go to the next one and drop them the Spanish on that stupid white dude. What was that video again? I wanna, okay, uh, I wanna check that video out and call that woman a cunt. So you're going to need to search on YouTube, Ottawa County Commission YouTube, or just Ottawa County Commission. And it's the latest video. It's from last night. You will, um, bump ahead to the, the minute mark, the timestamp is, 64 minutes. Tyler says, first these people ruined the word patriot. Now they're hijacking Christianity. I wish they'd all go on an Ocean Gate sub tour to see the Titanic. Nathaniel Kelly. Wait a minute. This chick's name? Hold on a second here.
And that Al Gore hard to charge the batteries of electric cars. And that Al Gore.
Will call me moo.
Kelly from Hudsonville.
Oh boy, that's her. That is her. Her dad is the one. Okay. This is a new, thank you. We buried the lead. That is the daughter of the guy. Who, God, what a tip. Who the Ottawa County Commission wants to put him in as the, um, health director. They want Adeline Hamley out and they want that guy in. And he has just as much, um, knowledge base in health director type of position as our immortal Joe Martinez. Cause Joe is, uh, A and E heating and cooling. And I don't think Joe, uh, has what it takes to be a health director. You know, I mean, when it comes to installing a Remy halo or putting in a new furnace or an AC. Yeah, but if Joe Martinez wanted to be the health director of Kent County, I'd say fuck that shit. He's had, must've drank a case of Dos Equis or some shit, or I don't know. Uh, no, Joe should not be the health director. Hang on, I just fucked shit up here. Her dad is offering his daughter to Moss as his next child bride. Corey says, imagine if they hijacked the rainbow flag. Oh yeah. At the 44, 41 minute mark, a woman gives the people in charge the business. All right, I might have to back up to that shit. This is crazy. We're breaking down timestamps. All right.
Self ordained to regulate, legislate, social norms, and eradicate anything that does not align with your dogmatic thinking.
Thank you.
All right. So I probably would have agreed with that guy.
Number 12 is Elizabeth, Elizabeth Brubaker, Holland Township.
My name's Elizabeth Brubaker. I live in Holland Township. I'm here this evening to address the resolution to protect childhood innocence that appears on the agenda for this evening. I have four children. Most of them are young adults at this point. When I saw this agenda item last week, I thought about things that I believe took away some of my children's childhood innocence. And I thought I'd share them with you so that perhaps you can take them into account. When each of my children were in middle school, they became aware that some of their classmates regularly, regularly did not have enough to eat at lunch. This was quite a shock. How is it possible that in Ottawa County, there are children who are going hungry? Through the years, each of my children would add some granola bars or fruit to their lunches or their backpacks to share with these friends. So they recognized the problem wasn't going away. My children grew up with a young family member that struggled mightily with severe mental illness. Watching their family member struggle to find adequate and appropriate help and discovering that crises were often handled through the police department instead of a mental health service based organization was a huge blow to their childhood innocence. It's important to me to say that while I think that systemic changes are dearly needed, my observation is that the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department responded appropriately and treated our family member with dignity anytime that they were called, and I'm grateful for that. The other significant thing that took away some of my children's childhood innocence was when a student was found to have a gun in his possession at the West Ottawa High School in 2018. At that time, I had a student in high school and another in the middle school. And they had seen and heard stories of mass shootings in other schools. And they'd been through the anything but innocence preserving trauma of active shooting drills. So they knew the potential outcome, the outcome of a gun at school. And that event opened up the possibility of that potential at their school, which continued through lockdowns in the following years for widespread social media gun threats. As I began writing my thoughts about this resolution, I started forming some questions. For example, I'm quite confused about how so many commissioners here have adopted the mantra of protect our kids while at the same time denying formally approved grant monies to organizations that specifically work to ease the burden of mental health challenges in the community. What kind of protection is that for anyone in Ottawa County? And how is this resolution that claims to want to protect childhood innocence on the agenda just weeks after a majority of you voted to pass a resolution that supported the idea that the second amendment is absolute? Gun violence and suicide by bullet are the opposite of protecting childhood innocence. So I have to ask, are you truly not aware of the issues that are harming our children? Or are you purposefully using our children as pawns for your political endgame? And by ignoring the things that really are issues, how much harm are you doing? Thank you.
Thank you.
I love her. That was excellent. Incredible. Stop Ottawaimpact.com. They blocked community mental health funding for weeks because they were worried gay people might get help when they needed it. I'm telling you, gay people in the world today in the United States are the most hated group of people hands down. The black guys are going, wow, fuck, man. This is terrible for them. Even worse if you're a black gay guy. Jesus, fuck. All right. I gotta put the brakes on this. I could do this all day. All right? This is good shit. And not that I'm doing this because it's good shit. I'm doing it because these are fucking idiots. These are psychopaths that live amongst us. Motherfucker. But I gotta get my dad on. It's Dear Meathead brought to you by Baldwin Ace Hardware. Hello, hello?
Good morning, sir.
Hi Dad.
This is Meathead and his super assistant, Joanne at your service.
Hey, she's so wonderful and you are so lucky to have her.
Yes, I am the luckiest soul on this earth.
Was there ever a time that you like, do you know what it means when people like take something for granted? You know, they like just assume it's always gonna be there.
Yeah, I'm sure it has happened.
Yeah.
But I really don't recall it.
Yeah. You can never let, you can never, ever take your significant other for granted. And, and I, I never got that impression that you did. But I mean, seriously, if I didn't have Diana, if you didn't have Joanne, we'd be lost.
Oh, I definitely would be lost. You kidding?
I mean, I mean, but you actually would be lost. Like you'd be wandering around.
I know, I know, I know. And I got all the grounds to walk around.
You're like, where is she? Where, where does she go, guy?
You hear her laughing?
I do, I do hear her laughing and that, that actually is good. If we hear Joanne laughing.
She's my walk, uh, what was I gonna say? She's my laughing machine.
Oh, okay, good. Well, I know she loves to laugh at you. And I mean, I should say she loves to laugh with you.
Yeah, but don't get, don't ever get her mad.
Oh, hell no. I, that is, that's never fun. I don't think I've ever, uh, there's been a couple of times when Joanne's had to tell me how she feels, but I don't think she's ever really gotten angry at me.
No, no, I don't think so.
She's very, when she has something to say, she's direct and she says, okay, I don't think this is right or, you know, and that's, I've always, I've always appreciated that. But.
Well, I'm a guy, she's as simple as her sweetheart.
Well, I mean, the day I, the day I met her, I, I mean, that was a very, uh, um, that was a different time for me, being that I was only 10 years old and my mom and dad split up and then I go to your house and I, and she was so sweet to me. I was like, well, I like her. She's very nice to me.
Oh, she's a great person. She's all, she's the love of my life.
Come on, you guys.
All right. Yeah, I know. Yeah, we're gonna.
I expect this is a, today is Joanne's special day.
I love that. I love that. We're, we're gonna make her cry and then she's gonna be like, all right, enough of this. Hey, I want to let you know in the, and yesterday in the backyard, I found a snake.
A snake?
Yeah. He was, and he's big. He's a garter snake, but he's a big guy. I've never seen a garter snake so big. He's four, three to four feet long.
Oh my. Wow.
And, and big around.
I hate snakes.
He was as like, as big as like a black guy's ding dong.
Oh my God. That somebody we know?
But anyway, yeah. So how do you guys feel about snakes?
I, I cannot stand it. I cannot stand it.
Well, I didn't, uh, I, I wasn't sure what to think, but this one was very docile. And, uh, yeah, I swear to God, he came right up to me and I actually touched him. Yeah, he's soft. He was very soft. It felt like, um, like almost like leather.
Oh honey, and that's just get a long stick. You just pick him up with the stick, walk away a hundred yards away from your house.
Well, he's, he's living there though. He goes under the, under the ground into like, uh, he's got like a whole, you know, setup.
Oh my God.
Oh yeah. He's, he's hanging out at my, I think he's been there for quite some time, actually.
Wow. Hey, is it a chance that they can walk into your house? Crawl, crawl, crawl in there?
Yeah, I'm gonna say that the odds of them walking into the house is, is pretty.
Yeah, you know. How you doing, buddy? You got a cup?
You know, I, 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 I don't know. I guess it's possible. I, I hope not. I hope I don't have to, I hope I have no snakes walking around.
You know, where I come from, we always had snakes. But we, uh, just didn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, you call them Iranians.
Huh?
Yeah, it was all the Iranians. Yeah, it was all the Iranians that you lived with.
I know. Oh, I hate snakes.
Yep, I'm with you. That's why I got rid of the former Xaniacs. But, yeah, so, um, all right, so I'm gonna keep the snake. I'm not gonna fling him away with a stick, and...
Nah, I don't wanna kill him.
No, I don't wanna do that, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna wreck his home. I, I like the snake, so as long as he doesn't have babies and they wind up in my house.
Never, yeah, never know. One day he'll be walking in your house.
Yep, yep, yep. They, you know, they still don't walk. They, they, uh, they kinda like...
Sometimes they don't crawl, they walk.
I think, I, I think they slither.
Oh, boy.
And I think they can swim, too, you know?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
But, uh, garters are not poisonous, and, um, they, they, uh, they eat a lot of bugs and, uh, and mice. So if you had to choose in your house between a, uh, between mice in your house or snakes, what would you choose?
I'd take the mice.
You would take the mice?
Yeah.
I'd take the mice.
Okay, I would take the snakes. I think the mice, uh, have a better chance of harboring, like, uh, you know, things you don't like, like disease. And I think they, uh, have babies faster than mice, but I don't know. I don't know anything. I'm just guessing.
Well, it's a creature of God.
Okay, so the mouse is a creature of God. What is...
It is. All the animals of earth are creatures of God.
Is the snake a creature of God?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. So they're both creatures of God, but if you had to choose, you'd go with the mice?
God created all of these things.
I hear you. I hear you. Um, okay, question. Uh, Don writes, Meathead, it's really dry right now, and...
Yes, it is, John.
Uh, that, you know, sometimes people are like, man, if, if I water this, it's gonna be a lot of water to bring it back. Do I let it go dry and let it go dormant, or do I water it and spend all the money watering it?
Well, I don't know, but you're in the, the country, we cannot do any of that. By law, we can get penalized to water.
Oh, I didn't know you were in a spot that has like a water ban.
I know, but we water, and we, sometimes we cheat and water, you know?
Oh, yeah, oh, you're, hey, Joanne's, you're, I, I don't think you're supposed to talk about it. She's afraid you're gonna get busted.
Nobody's listening right now.
Okay, yeah, well, no, typically, no one listens. But, all right, so, um...
I'll tell him it was a visitor here talking to us.
But I think what his concern is, if he really wants to water, it's gonna be a huge expense. If you had to choose, what would you do? Would you water? Would you not water?
If I had a choice, I'd water.
You would water, even if, even if it's like becomes quite expensive?
It is expensive.
Well, I don't know what I'd do about that, but I'd like, I'd water. That would be, I was a decent to water.
Okay. Uh, Mark writes, good morning, Reuben.
Hi, Mark.
He says, a friend of mine has had over a dozen jobs in the past three years. He will work the job for a week or two, or sometimes just a day, before he quits and goes back to his original job that he has been at off and on for several years, delivering ice cream. What's up with this behavior, Meathead? Should I still pay attention to this guy? Or shut him out of my life completely?
I don't get it. I really don't get it.
A big job got to do with friendship.
Yeah, I'm not sure what he means by that, so I...
Do I say what job got to do with friendship?
Yeah, I, I think he should still be his friend, but what do you think about him quitting all these jobs and, and such?
Is that gonna affect his friendship?
I, I don't think so. I think he should still be friends with him.
So why does he care?
Yeah, I mean, who cares if, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if he has 10 jobs, that, that shouldn't matter. It gives you something to talk about.
Yeah. He's a job. He goes to work, come back, he don't have a job tomorrow, got a different job?
He gets bored easy.
Yeah.
Joanne says he gets bored easy.
Now, uh, everybody knows that for years you were a top-level seller, a salesperson of insurance. Um, that's what you, that, that's how you made your, uh, living for most of your life, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
But, uh, what, did you, do you recall any other jobs that you were not fond of? When you were, as the years passed, from the time, I don't know, did you ever have a job when you lived in Iran?
No.
No jobs. You didn't have a job till you came to America.
I was just a young kid.
Right, right. Um, so what was the first job in the US?
I'm trying to think.
I thought I saw you working at a drugstore. Is that a picture?
It wasn't a drugstore, yeah. How do you even know this?
Well, I, I saw a picture of you, and you had...
I don't remember. I mean, you do. Yeah, I worked in a drugstore. You're right. That's absolutely correct. I was the cigar counter. I was, uh, Cunningham, Cunningham Drugstore.
Cunningham Drugstore in Detroit.
In Detroit, downtown Detroit.
Now, you weren't the pharmacist, were you?
No, I was not at that point, no. I was going to, I was actually headed to become a pharmacist, but I never manifested.
Oh, okay, so you, you, you got that job, entry level, and then you thought there was an interest in becoming a pharmacist?
Yeah, when I worked at Cunningham Drugstore, occasionally they'd let me fill out a prescription, but, uh, the head, uh, head honcho, I don't know what he's named with, he'd always check what I did. But they wouldn't let me do too many of those things. So, hey, those drugs, uh, God, all kinds of crap was coming up.
Oh, yeah, there was, uh, there's always changes in that field, or new medicines and things like that, and you gotta know the, the interactions.
I managed that store.
Okay, okay. Um, wow, so that's, uh, that, yeah, because I saw you wearing that, that, you looked like you were wearing something that a pharmacist would, would wear. You looked like a pharmacist in that picture, I remember. So that was a good job, but then you finally, you eventually found your way over to the, how did you find your way into the insurance industry? Do you, do you recall?
There was a, there was a guy that, I used to go to lunch, there's a, next to our Cunningham Drugstore.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd go there for lunch, and there's a guy that was sitting next to me, and he, somehow or other, we struck up, that he was, I'm trying to think, uh... Oh, he wanted me to become, uh...
Yeah.
Some, some job he did that interested me, and I, I just signed for that job.
Okay, so he maybe talked up the place, and you thought you'd be interested?
He did. Yeah, he and I used to have lunch.
That's like when Donnie met Jordan in the Wolf of Wall Street. So he got you to sign up?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Man, you got a mind of an ostrich. Ostrich remembers everything.
They do. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a, that's a, it sounds weird, but...
Look it up.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's mind of an ostrich.
Well, they're pretty smart.
Hey, you know what? I'll take your word for it. And, and even if it is, even if it, yeah, either way, it's a compliment.
Anyway, he and I used to go at, uh, next to the Cunningham Drugstore, there was a place that served lunch. We used to, you know, he wanted, and he decided to give me a job. Uh, I forget the company that he was with, and, uh, they did not wanna hire me. But we, uh, he and I got together and went to this other company, whatever it was.
Uh-huh. Do you remember the name of the company called Life of Virginia?
Life of Virginia.
That was the, that was an insurance company that you were, uh, you were a heavy hitter there. You were making fat stacks.
I became a heavy hitter, yeah.
I know it. I know it, man. You raised a family on that money.
True as hell.
Hell, you paid for two divorces with that money.
Hey.
That's not easy. That's not easy. Holy cow.
How about, how about?
Yeah, yeah, wow. Um, all right, let me, let me take a look here. Go back to some of these questions. Uh, let's see, that one doesn't make sense. Okay, this is weird. Dear Meathead, if you drop a bar of soap on the floor of the shower, is the soap dirty or the floor clean?
Holy cow.
That's gonna blow your mind.
Yeah, that's a loaded one. How do I know?
Yeah, we might have to come back to that one. All right, do you have any closing thoughts that you'd like to leave us with, or words of wisdom, Dad?
Well, I, I think the greatest thing that God has ever gave us, and we don't practice it, is to be a cool person. Really. If somebody says something that you don't, doesn't, uh, fancy your personality, don't right away jump the gun to try to fight it back off.
Yeah, I remember, I remember at church, they said, uh, the third commandment is, uh, thou shall be cool.
That, that absolutely should be one of them. You know, coolness is the greatest thing in the world.
Well, Dad, you are very cool. I mean, not, not, uh, peop- typically, people your age, Joanne's age and your age are cool, but you two are very cool.
Well, I, I consider that as a very big compliment, thank you.
You are. I mean, uh, you are very cool, and, uh, Jesus made you cool.
And, and I can't carry a conversation with anybody I meet. I, I can, I can meet Roosevelt and have a conversation with him. One thing, I can make a stone talk. I've never heard of that one.
That's true. All right, and then you finish, it, it, I don't, it's, did you hit the volume button on your phone? Is it wonky?
I don't know what I did, but I'm losing you.
All right. Uh, and then, of course, the line, "An ostrich remembers everything."
Yes, yes.
Dad and Joanne, I love you forever.
That's right.
You guys have a good day, okay? I'm gonna end it right there.
You do the same, and you know what? You bring a lot of laughter in my and Joanne's life.
Oh, it's all you, man. Are you kidding me? That's all you.
Well, hey, I guess, uh, what is it? Something doesn't fall too far from the...
Yes, the apple, the apple...
The apple doesn't fall far from, uh...
Yep, yep.
From who?
From the tree.
From the ostrich.
The apple doesn't fall far from the ostrich. Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, Dad, uh, just like Jesus said, be cool today.
Yes, God bless Jesus.
Okay, I love you guys.
God is bigger than Jesus.
Yes, okay. All right, you guys, I love you.
I'll tell you later, say I love you, honey.
You got it. Bye-bye.
Hello, Diana, and goodbye.
Hello, bye-bye. There we go. Wow. Uh, Dad was on fire. "The ostrich doesn't fall far from the ox." "I'd love to hear a conversation between Eric's dad and Bender Bones." Oh, I, I, yeah, no, we don't, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna do that. Phew. That was fun. "His jo- his job in Iran was delivering the family dishes to the local police department." Thank you. I should have, I wish I would have seen that earlier. "I'm curious how and why the only English Meathead knew was the, uh, the words or the term hot dog when he arrived." That's true. Hot dog, hot dog. So he's constantly eating hot dogs. Uh, Tyler laughing at my dad saying, ah, nobody is listening to this. Oh, fuck. Chris says, nobody listening right now. He knows the score. Uh, hell, I'm just impressed that an hour and 24 minutes, we still are north of three dozen. That's, that's big for your old pal EZ. All right. Dear Meathead, brought to you by Baldwin Ace Hardware. Do you realize that I haven't had one commercial read yet, and so I have to make those up, and then I have to go tinkle? So essentially, the first, uh, 84 minutes, zero commercials, and then the last 36, uh, eight commercials. That's how it goes. Get on a roll, we'll just push them down the road, but you gotta make them up sometime. Anyway. Uh, before I do take a break to go tinkle, if you are enjoying the show, okay? When I started podcasting, the point was, the way I was, the way I built it was, I'm going to podcast every day for free, and at some point, I'm going to promote the Patreon, where there's more podcasting. Patreon has no ads. It's ad-free, listener-supported. I put up a lot on Patreon, much more than I do on the free platform. Essentially, two separate things, but also joined. Like, a lot of what I talk about on Patreon has something to do with what I talked about on the free Patreon. Yesterday's Patreon, I talked about, um, how Free Beer is into texting 11-year-old boys at 3:30 in the morning. That's true. Uh, not, not a lot of people know that story, but that is true. I had a conversation with Free Beer's current wife, for now, the ex-husband, who sends me screenshots of fucking killer moments. It was described by Ashley as a baller response to Greg texting this little boy, his stepson, at 1, 2, 3 in the morning incessantly. That was ugly. You must hear this. It's yesterday's Patreon bonus podcast. Holy shit. Greg is so fucked. Oh, this guy is gonna whip Greg's ass one day. And I wanna be there to see it. Oh, shit. Anyway, that's on Patreon. You must sign up to check it out. Now, the best part is, it's free. It's fucking free. You got, I was able to finagle this with Patreon, to be able to allow it so that you can check out my show for one full week and listen to as much as you want for no cost. And when, okay, let's say you're done, just cancel it, and then it doesn't charge you. You do have to put a payment form in there. Oh, no! Don't chew my crock! You have to put a, a payment form in there, so if you don't cancel it, it's gonna charge you five or 10 bucks at the end of it. But my hope is you'll like it. Stop! Hang on. No, it's my own fault. I leave it around. Uh, my hope is you have to get to the end of the seven days, like, well, this is fucking fun. I love this. Uh, I put a lot of stuff on there, including who are these Zanes, where I review old air-check clips of your old pal EZ? Who are these Free Beers, where I review current clips from the disaster that is the Free Beer and Howling Show? Ben and I have a good roast of their show. Plus, the Ben and Eric Patreon Podcast and much more. There's actually, and you're, a lot of times, people say, and much, much more, and there isn't much, much more. There actually is much, much more. So sign up. I wanna see, uh, names with seven days free. I got two of them yesterday. I wanna see five more today. Patreon.com/EricZane. All of this last hour and a half is brought to you by Irvine's Auto Repair, Grand Rapids Hybrid and EV. They fix cars in Grand Rapids, Michigan, 616-532-6600. Check them out online at Irvine's.com. That's E-R-Vines.com. Um, they are right in the middle of Grand Rapids, so pretty easy to get to on 44th, just east of 131. There's a side street called Stafford. They're on Stafford. They have loaner cars available for free. You can drop the car off early, like, if you're getting it, uh, if you have work starting on a Monday, you can drop the car off on Sunday night, put the keys in the drop box. Take care of it that way. Late bird pickup, if you like, and, uh, everything else, and the finest, the finest coffee slash hot chocolate, uh, hot chocolate... hot chocolate slash cappuccino machine you'll ever find in the lobby. And the sweetest, nicest people that work there, family veteran lady-owned. Irvine's Auto Repair, Grand Rapids Hybrid and EV. It's very important that you, as listeners of the show, get behind the sponsors and support them, because when you support them and let them know that you heard about them from me, that means that it validates the money that they spend with me to, for me to talk about their messages. And then they want to keep spending their money with me, and then I keep podcasting to you. See, it's, it's a relationship between me, these business owners, and you. And if you patronize the business owners that support this Eric Zane Show podcast and let them know that you heard about them from me, I can do this until the day I die. I mean, I know that I can actually sit and talk for 10 hours if I wanted to. And the, where it gets tricky is, if I ever happen to have all my sponsors go belly up, I am thoroughly fucked. So, support the sponsors that support me and we'll be able to keep doing this and ripping Ottawa County a new asshole. Sarah Honda Granville is a fantastic dealership that is the best. They are the number one Honda volume dealer in Michigan. Now, think about that. Where I live is not the most populated area. Detroit, southeast Michigan is in an unbelievably enormous metro area. Yet, the number one Honda volume dealer is here in the greater Grand Rapids area. That's because they have such a wonderful reputation for terrifically servicing the clients, the customers. Sarah Honda Granville. Online at sarahhondagranville.com. So big. 28 and a half pounds. Uh, she was at the vet yesterday. It was Darla. So go to Sarah Honda Granville on Kenwa Avenue, uh, just north of 44th Street. Hello Darla. Do you like Sarah Honda Granville? Let's see if she's chatty today. The Mario Flores Lake Shore Team of Van Dyke Mortgage for mortgages, 231-332-6505. Anywhere in the US, call that number, ask about a mortgage. Or maybe a refi. Get some cash out of your home to pay off a high interest credit card bill. Rick at TC Paintball, killer! Love that guy. Book an event at TC Paintball today. Get the neighborhood kids together. And go. Unless if you're a pain in the ass stepdad who's trying too hard to replace a dad who doesn't want to be replaced. Greg! Herking! TC Paintball, open to everyone except Greg Daniels. TCPaintballGR.com. Book an event today. Ask about, um, the kids league too. You know, that's where the kids go there and they play with the lower impact weaponry. So it doesn't hurt as much, man, because you know, some of these young kids, you want to have a good experience. And if, I mean, it's no picnic when you get hit with a paintball. It fucking hurts for about 15 seconds. It hurts like a motherfucker in some cases. So you gotta go with the low-impact guns and kinda, uh, get them used to it before you drop them into a fucking slaughterhouse. Hi honey. Hello puppy. Uh, Berlin Raceway, they've got racing on Saturday. Fourth of July event, that's July 1. The old folks get in free. Active and retired military get in free. Fireworks at the end of the event. Tickets, uh, 14 bucks when you buy them online, berlinareway.com. 15 and under free, parking free. Bring in a cooler with all your snacks, no beer, no glass, no booze, no glass. BerlinRaceway.com. Thank you for sitting through all those ads. Chris refers to my puppy as Chonky. Patrick says, "The Patreon's pretty sweet, especially on holiday weekends when all the other poser shows just disappear for a week." Eric posts a ton on Patreon. Thank you. Uh, Amy asked me when she saw the croc that, uh, Darla here was chewing on, is that the sawed-off croc? It is. It is. In fact, if you look on the side there, that's where the saw blade, right here. That's where the saw blade went into my foot. Uh, hello baby. So, uh, on this appointment that Darla had yesterday, uh, she got the last of her booster shots, so she doesn't need shots for a year now. And, uh, in a month, she's gained seven and a half pounds. She is appro- Tyler says she smelled the blood in the croc. She's, you know, knocking on the door 30. Now Bruce weighs 40. He's a huge Frenchie. Frenchie's usually like 25. But she's starting to kick Bruce's ass. So the 69, I was telling you that they do pretty soon. She's gonna demand that. So come on, let's 69, fucker. It's awful. But she will be north of 50, so the days of me holding her like this are numbered. And her underbite, she's establishing a bulldog underbite. You know, starting to look like typical Newago County Cedar Springs scumbag. You know, so she, she's getting that and her little teeth, her big girl teeth are growing in. I'll be right. Amy says, "Is Eric doing a Patreon Live this week?" Does anyone know? You mean Ben and Eric? No. Uh, no Ben and Eric this week. In fact, this is my last free podcast until next, till July 6. You will have five days of not the best of the Eric Zane Show Podcast. Those shows will range anywhere from two and a half to four hours, each of those. And then my, uh, Patreon, I will feature something to listen to while I was away. Uh, those are Free Beer and Hot Wing Shows that I'm probably gonna get a cease and desist over one day. From like 2010. That I got my hands on. Hang on. God, no! This dog is trying to wreck the show. All right. Where we live in Michigan, uh, everybody is losing their shit because the air is a little smoky. Massive fires in Canada. And, uh, the smoke is blowing down here. And, uh, it, it looks like a, like a ground level haze. Last few days have been that way. And man, you would think that the four horsemen of the apocalypse are coming down because everybody's like, oh my God, the air quality's so bad. What are we gonna do? And all they're saying is, yeah, it'll be gone by Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, stay inside and, uh, don't run a marathon. Try not to be outside, you know, this smoky air. You don't want to sit there and breathe smoky air, all these particulates. It's not, it's not good for you. Like, there's a chart. And, uh, if it's all the way to the left, that means it's pristine. Ours is all the way to the right. Remember it was like that in New York not long ago? Well, now it's like that here. Uh, actually, the, the number is like 200 and something like that, which is very, very bad. But I remember that when, when New York was experiencing it, I think that number was like, the value was like between 350 and 400. It was, it was much higher. Remember the sky was orange there? But we're getting that now here, that they made a big deal because Grand Rapids has the dirtiest air in the United States right now. And I, I don't know if you know this or not, but when you're in your car, there's something you can do that makes you not susceptible to breathing that air. And it wasn't that long ago that I, and they actually did a news story about it. It says, "Amid wildfire smoke in Michigan, don't overlook this button on your car." Um, you know the one in your AC and your dash? It's, uh, it's an image of like your car, an outline of your car with an arrow, but it's, it's, it's kind of bent. It's going back into the car. It's an arrow that changes direction. It starts one way and then it bends down like a hook and it goes the other way. If you hit that button, your vehicle is recirculating the air in the car. It's not allowing outside air to come in the car. So let's say you're driving by a place, like there's a, 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 what do you call it? Waste water treatment plant where, near where, um, we live and you drive by and it smells like fuck every time. If well before you get it, you hit that button, you won't smell it. And if you're driving around in an area that has polluted air and you don't have that button engaged, if you don't have that button engaged, you're getting the outside air into your car. And you're thinking, oh, I'm safe in the car. You're not. You gotta hit that fucking button. You hit that button and, uh, it will recirculate the air. And, uh, I was also reading, "That button keeps pollution, exhaust fumes, and other unfortunate smells," like I was talking about, "and pollen out of your car. And for those in states blanketed by Canadian wildfire smoke, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Iowa, Indiana, Michigan, Pennsylvania, and New York, as of Tuesday evening, this could mean having cleaner, easier to breathe air in your car." Let's see. There was something about this. Okay. Even if you aren't impacted by record-high heat or hazy wildfire smoke, that button can still be a good bang for your buck, literally. When your car has to pull in and cool, usually hot air from the outside, your vehicle has to work harder. Never knew that, which can mean using more gas. Never knew that. But if you recirculate the already chilled air in your car's cabin, your vehicle should be more fuel-efficient. Holy fuck! Because the air recirculation button goes hand-in-hand with a vehicle's air conditioning system, you'll likely want to use it when it's, when the temperature outside is 75 degrees Fahrenheit or greater. And I'm like, why the fuck wouldn't we use this all the time? It says, "If you use that, not in the summer months, it's not a good idea, uh, to use it in the winter or when your windows become, uh, foggy. Anytime you're using defrost, it's best to not have that button on. Also, using it while you have your heater on isn't going to do anything for your vehicle." Who the fuck knew? You'd think that they'd explain that. That to me sounds like more important than, uh, DRNP. What does that button mean? I've been driving a car since, uh, 1987 and I didn't know what the fuck that meant. What? They need to make that more clear. Like when you, they sell you the car, there's usually a sales guy who's like going over everything. Oh yeah, this is the satellite, uh, this is the nav, uh, this, this is the heated seats. And this button here, which has been on cars since, uh, cars were first invented. You know what this does? No, I have no idea. I don't know either. I better check the manual. Nobody knows what that fucking button means. But you gotta use that thing. Uh, "Where did the fire start anyway?" Rakim asks. Yeah, that if, and then Chris points it out, "Check out the fire map, Rakim. Looks like half of Canada is burning." Yeah, man. A lot of, a lot of timber up there. Anyplace where there's timber, there's gonna be a fire. I just pulled these off of my arm. That's what they use and they give you shots at Walmart. Yeah, who knew that you can go to Walmart and see, uh, various missing links of humanity and get your hep, A, B, and tetanus vaccinations? But yeah, that's the way they do it now. They don't even do it at the doctor's office. I went there to pick up some medicine for my brain and they go, "Hey, looks like you're due for tetanus and hep A and B. You interested?" They're free. I go, "Well, yeah, I'm interested." Sat my ass down there, uh, and then did it up. Got my vaccinations. I don't trust them, man. It's gonna cause me to have a heart attack. Oh shit, there was a story I wanted to get to about that. Just popped in my brain. I might have to save it for the Patreon. Yeah, I'm gonna have to. I don't want to look it up now. I won't remember. I never do. I don't know. How many of you believe this? Maybe? Show of hands. A lot of people believe that Jeffrey Epstein, uh, did not kill himself and that he was murdered because they were, uh, by people in power. Let's say Bill Clinton had him murdered because they didn't want to be, it did, they didn't want it to be revealed that they had sex with the young women that Jeffrey Epstein trafficked to Epstein Island or whatever, or at his place in Florida. If you've never really gotten to the bottom of what went on, uh, with all the stuff that Jeffrey Epstein did, it's worth a watch because too many people get caught up in the conspiracy surrounding his death and aren't really aware of how he did what he did. And, um, the level of, uh, of sinister actions that he was involved in. It's one of the most despicable things that a human has pulled off. I mean, he's right up there with like, uh, what Epstein pulled off with like Hitler and the Holocaust. It's, it's bad. It's really ugly. I mean, it's not as bad as Hitler, but I mean, it, it's, you can, in the same breath, that level of, uh, of awfulness. So after that dude croaked, everybody started like, oh my God, Epstein wasn't, uh, Epstein didn't kill himself. And that's been the fun thing to talk about. And then people are like, oh no, there's proof. There's, there's, there's no fucking proof. The fact of the matter is, the prison system, in this case, at New York City's Metropolitan Correctional Center, was massively underst- was massively understaffed. And, uh, it was quite easy for Epstein to do what he did. Remember in the weeks prior to his death, he tried to kill himself one other time. Now, this is an image that you're about to see from Epstein's cell. This is, uh, those are sheets that he was ripping strands of sheets off to fashion a noose. Now I know it's easy to say, oh, they, they planted that. They planted that. That, that's what everybody does these days. I'm the only guy in America who thinks that Jeffrey Epstein actually did kill himself. Not everything has to be a fucking conspiracy. He died by hanging in the jail while awaiting trial on federal sex trafficking charges. He, uh, fashioned an orange noose from a sheet or a shirt. When the room was searched after his death, they found extra bed sheets, another mattress, and a noose. So he had like a noose collection going. On August 10th, the inspector general said Epstein was in his cell at 8:00 PM. Officials said he made an unrecorded call on a landline. How is that unrecorded? And that was not monitored by prison communications? You see, that's the type of shit that makes, um, conspiracy theorists flock to this theory that the call was unrecorded. Epstein told the officers he was calling his mom, but his mom had already been dead, so he wasn't calling his mom. No one knows. Reports that staffers should have been monitoring this call made by Epstein, they were not. After 10:40 PM, Epstein was not checked on, nor was he monitored until officers discovered him hanging from the cell. As it indicated, he'd already tried killing himself July 23rd, 2019. And the inspector general reports that Bureau of Prisons employees should have been put on alert then. On July 30th, the inspector general said an email was sent to 70 staffers of the prison physiological unit instructing that Epstein was to be housed with a cellmate. But the inspector general said that warning went unheeded by Bureau of Prisons staff so that when his cellmate was moved on August 8th, another inmate was not placed in there. The inspector general makes clear that Epstein's death was in fact a suicide. The medical examiner who performed an autopsy detailing for the office of the inspector general, why Epstein's injuries were more consistent with and indicative of a suicide by hanging rather than a homicide by strangulation. Medical examiner also told the OIG that the ligature furrow was too broad- ligature furrow was too broad to have been caused by the electrical cord. So the, the mark on his neck was, it, it was wide, like a sheet. Now, with Epstein, no matter what you throw at it in this story like I am here, all of you and everyone else on the planet, all they have to do is go, no, lies. And then they believe that because you've all been told. And it's a fun story to suggest that Jeffrey Epstein, it's intriguing, it's, it's, it's a conspiracy that Jeffrey Epstein was gonna tip off the world as to all the famous people that he provided young poon tang for. But I'm, you know, no. Outside of like aliens, I don't think there's any conspiracies. That's a big one. I know. Members of the staff who also allegedly repeatedly misled the inspector general, including one supervisor who allegedly said she didn't know Epstein was supposed to have a roommate, even though she was on the email sent in July 2019, stating he should have one. Also, the camera system was not working. So now, okay, I admit, all these things, these little things that add up to no way of knowing. No one saw anything. No one heard anything. I realize it, how it does look, but I still don't believe it. It's just an inept system, a broken system, federal jails. They're terrible. They're understaffed. They're morons that work there. They don't have any infrastructure to make them run the way they should. It's a miracle people aren't just walking out of their cells whenever they want at federal We further found that multiple employees submitted false documents claiming that they had performed the required counts and rounds, and that several staff members lacked candor when questioned by the office of the inspector general about their actions. So they're, they're lying. They had lied to cover up their ineptness. To make it seem like, oh yeah, we, we did our rounds, but they didn't. They were, fuck, it was like Percy in the Green Mile. Remember that? Fuck! The report is coupled with nearly 4,000 pages of documents obtained by reporters earlier this month are under a FOIA.
I almost got the big bot dick because I know you want to hear it.
The document showed that toward the end of his life, Epstein sat alone in his cell, repeatedly calling himself a coward out loud. He went crackers. Thomas and his partner were charged with doctoring the logbooks, that's one of the guards, to make it seem like they completed their rounds when they had not, according to officials. Both pleaded guilty. It all worked out. But no, there's no conspiracy. Horrible story that I, it just broke last night. Which, there's gonna be a lot of questions here. NASCAR legend, Jimmy Johnson. Holy fuck. Here he is with his lovely wife. Look at her, she's pretty as a picture. Holy shit, look at these two. Can you imagine how attractive the children are or will be when they grow up of Jimmy Johnson and his wife, Chandra? Chandra's mother, his wife, so that's Jimmy Johnson's mother-in-law, apparently in Musk, in Oklahoma whipped out a pistol, shot her husband dead. The grand, one of her grandkids was there. That would be Jimmy Johnson and Chandra's niece or nephew, 11. Grandma shot the 11-year-old and then killed herself. What the fuck? My God. Uh, not a lot of answers yet on this. And people are wondering what the fuck happened. This is from a news team, local news team in Oklahoma. Check this out here.
That they are investigating this as a murder-suicide. And right now, the police say that it was a grandmother who killed her grandson, her husband, before killing herself.
Muskogee police say around nine o'clock last night, 68-year-old Terry Janway called 911 saying there was a disturbance at their home and someone had a gun.
Terry's the grandma.
They say they found 69-year-old Jack Janway lying on the floor in the hallway, then heard another gunshot from further inside.
Wow. They were there when it happened.
They conducted a rescue and pulled Jack out of the house.
They started making announcements at that point for anyone else inside the home to come outside. We get enough officers there and at that time-
Little underdressed.
-go inside the home to clear it and see who else is inside the residence. And that's when they discovered two more deceased people.
Officer Lynn Hamlin says they found 11-year-old Dalton Janway in a bedroom and Terry in the living room, both dead. MPD says they all died from a gunshot wound, and their investigation leads them to believe Terry killed her husband, Jack, and her grandson before killing herself. Officer Hamlin says cases like this one are rare, and there is help available for first responders and people in the community.
Now Muskogee PD says there is no threat to the public, and right now they're continuing to talk to neighbors to see if anyone in that area heard anything. In Muskogee, Shay Smith, 2 News, Oklahoma.
That is fucked up.
Meet the press now.
Yeah. Grandma apparently flipped out and, and did that. And now, uh, so that is the mother and father of Jimmy Johnson's wife, his in-laws. My God. Holy shit. Rakim writes, grandma's going to be the asshole of the day. Wow, that's too funny. I don't know how funny it is. Wait a minute. Wasn't Rakim the guy yesterday who busted my balls about, I don't know what the fuck joke I was making fun of? That catches me off guard that you would suggest that anything of this is funny. I think that's funny, that you think it's funny. Savage sack lunch says, time traveling grandma saves world, maybe? Jesus Christ. Cole says maybe Rakim is asshole of the day. That would be something. Well, I know it's a wide open field today, but I would have to say that there's zero funny about the triple, about the double murder-suicide that went on with Jimmy Johnson's in-laws and nephew. Ha, ha, ha. Oh my God, that's funny. What? A little strange. A little uncomfortable with that. All right. Thank you to my friends over at A&amp;E Heating and Cooling, Joe Martinez, 616-516-8579. Get your furnace and AC units cleaned and maintained with A&amp;E Heating and Cooling. Online at aeheatingcooling.net or call 616-516-8579. That's 616-516-8579. Ask about the $79 AC tune-up. Trust me, you need it if you don't remember the last time you had one. Thank you to Johnson Carpet One Discount Outlet. The lowest price for flooring in all of Michigan and beyond. If you're any even, uh, any way even remotely in the area of West Michigan, it is worth the trip. To head over to Johnson Carpet One Discount Outlet. The lowest price for flooring because of the amount of flooring that they buy from the distributors makes it so that they can charge a lower price than everybody else. Because they get it cheaper, because they buy so much. It's the old pass the savings on to you thing. Well, and they've also given me permission to give you permission to simply say my name when you walk in the store and you will save an additional 10% at Johnson Carpet One Discount Outlet. Saving you money is what they do. Go in, say hello, and be ready to leave with the flooring that you need. So maybe measure out the room before you go and know that you're gonna go, you're gonna leave there with all that you need to have your flooring installed or do it yourself. It's up to you. But yeah, so have your measurements when you go there. Say my name, save 10%. Pick out the flooring that you, that you want. Carpet, hardwood, tile, laminate, vinyl plank, ceramic. They have it all. Also Kent County Health Department, thank you. Talking about health departments earlier in their show, Ottawa's a disaster. Kent is not. Their act, their health department is actually run by Dr. Adam London, not a schmuck from HVAC business. Uh, thank you, Kent County Health Department. Their WIC program, I should say the WIC program, they want you to be involved in it if you're struggling to keep food on the table. First step is seeing if you qualify. So call 616-632-7200 and ask about that. If you qualify, you will have access to a ton of food that you can get at the store with a, with a, with a card that has your allotment per month to help you keep your family fed while you work your way through whatever it is that's causing that trouble to happen. Kent County Health Department, call 616-632-7200, or you can go to their website, accesskent.com/health. Your asshole of the day. I'm not gonna make it Rakim, whatever. Maybe he just misspoke. Jimmy Johnson story, you got the Epstein story, you got my dad, dear meathead, that was awesome. Uh, the smoke in the area, the button on your car, the snake in my, in my backyard. My dog's 69-ing. Ottawa County, now we're talking. So the little girl, and thanks to whoever it was that pointed out that that little girl that spoke at the meeting, her dad is the HVAC scumbag who they want to make as the new health director. And that ugly bitch grandma standing next to the little kid during the brainwashing book report. I don't know the name of the asshole who's the HVAC guy, but I'm just gonna say HVAC brainwasher because he's clearly brainwashing his kid to be the next level of hatred, the next hater in Ottawa County. That's how he's raising his kid, to be a piece of shit. And she will when she grows up. It's not her fault. That's the way she was raised. I don't fault the kid. It's child abuse in my opinion. My God. So there you go. That is your asshole of the day. Kristen Megan. That's her mother, according to TOFUS. Bob says, another person adding to the crazy in-law stereotype concerning the passing, the double homicide-suicide. Jesus. That's it, man. We are done with this. I'll see you on Patreon. If you're not, go do it right now and sign up for seven days free so that we can hang out more and have more laughs and more shit to talk about on the Patreon Bonus Podcast. That will start in a little while. And then I'm taking a break until Thursday, July 6. But that doesn't mean you won't have anything to listen to. You'll have hours and hours of content that I have already scheduled to be posted for you. Okay? I worked ahead for a week and a half. Imagine that. Yep, just me by myself. Thanks, folks. I appreciate you. Talk to you later. Bye-bye.